Time is now 7:02. I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, January 13th, 2020. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubus? Mr. Razak, here. Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demme?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
And we are all here. Ms. Grover, will you lead us in pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Since it's the beginning of the new semester, don't have a board salute, so we're going to move to our student representative report. It's from Matia Valley High School, and Brooke Pegues is our student representative. Hey, Brooke, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Good evening. My name is Brooke Pegues, and I am the class of 2021 Executive Board Representative for MV Student Government, and I am very excited to join you all tonight. We are having our annual MLK Day of Service next Monday. We are expecting a great turnout and lots of service given back to the community. The dance team hosted their annual Kick for a Cause fundraiser, January 10th, at the Boys' Varsity Basketball Game. The Matia, Niqua, and Wabanzie Dance Teams came together to raise money for the Rottle McDonald House. Great job to our dancers and students for fundraising. The music department hosted their annual collage performance, which included over 900 students and four shows. Great job to all of our performers. The Madrigal Singers had a great four shows during the week of December 16th. Congrats to our singers and their fantastic shows. The Marching Mustangs performed at the Outback Bowl in Tampa, Florida on New Year's Day. Congratulations to our talented and hard-working marching band. The Scholastic Art Competition is underway, and judging will take place this Saturday, January 18th. Artwork that receives an honorable mention, Silver Key or Gold Key, will be on exhibit at Downers Grove North High School. Good luck to all of our participants. Matia Valley was represented by 38 students at the District 9 Music Educators Association Concert and Jazz Festivals. Thirteen of those students were selected as All-State Musicians and perform at the All-State Ensemble in late January. Great job to all of our participants. That is all I have for the January Board Report. Thanks, everyone, and until next time, go-go Mustangs.
We do not have any public comment also tonight, so I move right to the superintendent report, Dr. Sullivan.
Hey, and I am going to be really quick tonight because there's this really tall guy out in the audience that seems to be anxious for the board to take some action, so we're going to try to get to that. So, our second semester of the school year is underway, and that means our VEX Robotics Competitions will be starting, and our first hosted tournament will be for high school and middle school teams on this Saturday, January 18th, at the Burkett Freshman Center. The event starts at 9:15, runs pretty much all day. It's historically been one of the largest robotics competitions in the state. All District 204, middle and high schools have teams in the competition, so I encourage you to stop by if you have time to check it out. We again thank the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation for providing us the funds to offer our after-school robotics club opportunities to our students and help fund our tournaments and competitions. And lastly, on Monday, January 20th, Wabanzie Valley will be the proud host of the City of Aurora's Martin Luther King Celebration, beginning at 6:30 PM, so we hope that the community will join us for that event. And that's it. It's all up to you now.
Ah. So, we're going to discuss the approval of the new superintendent for Indian Prairie Community Unit School District 204. So, as a Board of Education, one of our, probably the most important job that we have is to hire a superintendent to lead our district. We really appreciate Dr. Sullivan and all the work that she has done, and we really appreciated that she announced her intention to retire last April. That gave the board time to begin its process, and we immediately began the process of determining how to best accomplish the task. With the help of a national search firm, Rain Associates, Dr. Gloria Davis isn't bad. Thank you. We first asked our community for input. We needed to know what qualities community members wanted to see in our next superintendent. We thank the 1,200 people who completed our online survey and approximately 150 to 200 community members who attended the meetings to share their thoughts. Through this feedback, we learned that our community members wanted our next superintendent to be an individual who has the following qualities: A strong commitment to a student-first philosophy in all decisions; Excellent people skills; the ability to listen to input but be decisive; demonstrates leadership skills to work with people from all socioeconomic, ethnic, and cultural backgrounds; has experience that will benefit the long-term financial health of the district; and actively engage with all stakeholders throughout the community. This was the criteria that the board used in evaluating our candidates. We had 47 applicants from 18 states and the District of Columbia who applied for this position. From that group, six candidates, both in-state and out-of-state, were selected for first-round interviews. Using the established criteria, we then narrowed the field to two finalists. Each finalist spent the day in a series of interviews with district staff members and had a final interview with the board. After concluding the process, we selected Dr. Adrian Tally as the next superintendent for Indian Prairie School District. Dr. Tally is an accomplished administrator with more than 30 years of experience. He has spent the past five years as an administrator in Prince George's County Public Schools outside of Washington, DC, is one of the nation's 25 largest school districts with more than 130,000 students and 19,000 employees. And we thought we were big. He currently is in charge of 64 community schools within the district. Before that, Dr. Tally worked for the Department of Defense Education Agency in Alexandria, Virginia. He oversaw the implementation of a $1.9 billion budget and was responsible for the instructional programs in 181 schools, serving 84,000 students of military families worldwide. His experience also includes serving as an associate superintendent of Montgomery County Public Schools in Maryland. While there, he managed 40 of the district's schools with an enrollment of more than 29,000 students. He holds degrees from the University of Virginia, Boston College, and George Washington University. And so, while we found Dr. Tally's accomplishments and recommendations impressive, we really found his passion for doing what's best for students and families to be equally impressive. He is a leader who has established collaborative relationships with parent groups, community groups, business leaders, and elected officials to support district initiatives that best serve his students. We are excited for the community to meet Dr. Tally, based on his approval, and are confident that they will see the same outstanding qualities that make him the best choice to lead our district. So with that, I need a motion that the Board of Education approve Dr. Adrian Tally as the new superintendent for Indian Prairie Community Unit District 204 for the period of July 1, 2020, to June 30th, 2023, as presented. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve Dr. Adrian Tally as the new superintendent for Indian Prairie Community School District 204 for the period beginning July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2023, as presented.
There's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and second. Any comments or discussion?
Kind of after your speech.
What can we add?
I think you said it all.
Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0, beginning July 1st, 2020. Dr. Adrian Tally will be the superintendent of District 204. Congratulations.
I'm just letting it soak in for a moment, if you will let me. To the board president, to members of the board, I want to thank you for this great opportunity to be your next superintendent. I come at this in a very humble manner. I would like to take a point of privilege, if I may, to my family who's watching. I want to thank you for your continued support. I also hope to continue to make you proud. To one of my brothers, James, it's now official.[746.73][746.73](laughter) He was waiting for this night, so I just had to say that out loud. To the greater community of Indian Prairie, I believe Indian Prairie is an outstanding school district. I am privileged to know that I will be starting here July 1st as the next superintendent. To Dr. Sullivan, I thank you for everything you have done and will continue to do, and I look forward to having conversations with you as we transition. But it is important for everyone to understand, I come at this in a very collaborative manner. I want to work with you as we support our children. I want to work, to work with you as we support our staff. Indian Prairie is a great position in the community, and I know it will continue to be such when I come here. You have my utmost promise to be, to work as hard as possible. My goal is for children, my goal is for staff, and my goal is for the community. And for those I'll meet tomorrow, I look forward to that, but for those who I don't meet tomorrow, know that my door will be open, and I look forward to the next several years working with you as we support this whole community. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.[821.23][821.23](applause)
Dr. Tally, I think there's a couple of people here who have a little trouble.
We are starting that transition right away.
So, we now move to our consent agenda. I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items E through G as presented.
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items E through G as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're moving now to our action items. The first is the approval of the 2021-2022 school calendar. Mr. Hillman?
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Sullivan. In accordance with Board Policy 620, tonight you are asked to approve the calendar for the 2021 and 2022 school year. By approving this calendar, the district is back to having academic calendars published two years in advance. Both the community and the board have indicated that this is beneficial. Prior to presenting you with the calendar to approve, District 204 Calendar Committee, comprised of IPA members and central office administrator, meets to discuss the best options, taking into consideration guiding ideals and feedback from a variety of stakeholders. Once the committee has developed two options for consideration, the Board of Education provides feedback to the calendar committee. Changes are made as necessary, and the staff of District 204 are surveyed on the calendar option they would most prefer. The results are then used to make the recommendations. Based on the results of the survey, the administration is recommending that the Board of Education approve Calendar Option B. If approved by the board, the first day for teachers would be August 16th, and the first day for students would be August 19th. The last scheduled day for students would be June 2nd, and for teachers, June 3rd. At this time, I would be happy to entertain any questions the board may have, and then ask the board to take action to determine the calendar for the 21-22 school year. Seems so far away. I move that the Board of Education approve the 2021-2022 school calendar as presented.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions, comments?
Just comment. Just comment thanks to the calendar committee, because I know you guys put a lot of work into this and looked at a lot of things this time around, and yeah, Option B was the overwhelming response and favorite of staff and the people that were part of the committee, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing nothing else. Jackie, call the roll.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now move to the approval of reunification agreements. I need a motion that the Board of Education approve the reunification agreements with the Naperville Park District and Fox Valley Park District as presented.
I move that the board approve the respective intergovernmental agreement between Naperville Park District and Fox Valley Park District.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Anders, nice to have you with us.
Good evening, Board of Education.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
I will. My name is Mike Anders. I'm the Safety, Security, and Emergency Preparedness Coordinator for Indian Prairie School District 204. I appreciate you giving me the time to discuss these, the intergovernmental agreements. In my experience in public safety, as well as my two years of experience, almost two years now, with the district, I think the benefits of these agreements will provide these. Number one, we'll meet the obligations, provide a reunification location for students and staff in the event of a significant emergency where our facilities must be evacuated. Number two, these pre-designated sites will allow our staff to visit and examine the sites to determine their suitability to meet our needs for the event that most likely will take a significant amount of time to complete. These would go beyond a simple operational period of two to four hours. They'd go way beyond that. The pre-designated sites will allow IPSD 204 staff and our community partners the opportunity to train on the reunification process. Pre-incident planning and training will identify gaps in policy, procedure, logistical challenges, and operational challenges. I believe a significant emergency will challenge our public safety partners, community partners, and our staff. Pre-planning is put in place to mitigate risk and improve our district's emergency preparedness. That's why I brought this forward to you. I believe this is a benefit to Indian Prairie School District, and if there are any questions for you, I'd be happy to, or from you, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions or comments?
I appreciate you speaking to the fact that this is a very serious, serious emergency response. This is not something that's typically ever going to happen. In fact, we hope never for it to occur.
Correct. Our staff and our facilities can accommodate most incidents. This would be a very significant emergency that would impact beyond our school, it would be the community at that point.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now move to our discussion portion. We have a social-emotional learning update. Hello, Ms. Peel. Oh, and she has friends, too.[1305.15][1305.15](laughter)
Sounds surprised.[1307.15][1307.15](laughter)
Welcome, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about social and emotional learning. We'd like to provide an update and a progress report on some work that's been going on for a little while. This relates to Board Policy 665, which actually outlines some of the standards and goals for social and emotional learning. Tonight with me, I have three of the leaders that have been so helpful in moving things forward. Each of them have helped at their level, and I'll let them introduce themselves and the school in which they work, sir.
I'm Kevin Schnabel. I'm the principal at McCarty Elementary School.
Natalie Mittel, principal at Gregory Middle School.
Montrine Johnson, assistant principal at Wabanzie Valley High School.
And she would just like to note that she had the bigger bag.[1369.15][1369.15](laughter)
We all noticed.
Not that anybody was watching, but people I know that Wabanzie had the. So, our purpose for this evening is to provide you with an update as to our work in social and emotional learning. This is an important topic, and we wanted to talk to you about our goals as well as where we are in the implementation of that instruction. We'll talk a little bit about District Goal 1, as well as our leadership team, and then our progress. This is a big topic. It will not, we'll not cover everything that goes into social and emotional learning, but we'll hit the high points and talk a little bit about our systemic approach to it. One of the key pieces for social and emotional learning is professional learning, and we would be here very, have a very long night if we tried to include that tonight, so at the next board meeting, Candy Michele will be here, and our presentation on professional learning will be highlighting our work in both mental health, as well as social and emotional learning and well-being. And just another reminder is that this work will never be there, will never be at the end of it, so this is a continuous process that we'll continue to talk about, work through, review, revise, and meet, to meet the needs of our students and our staff. We know that you already know the importance of social and emotional learning because you were one of the few boards that has included it in your district goals. Our Castle coach was very impressed by that. But you're, one of our, District Goal Number One is to help all students grow socially, emotionally, and academically, and the measure for that will be by the end of the 2021 school year, we'll fully adopt and implement evidence-based programs and practices in all schools at all grade levels that explicitly address students' social and emotional competencies. So, we take this goal very seriously, and we are pretty confident that we will meet the measurement to achieve that piece of that goal, and we'll talk to you a little bit about that tonight. One of the other pieces of this is the long-term benefits of social and emotional learning, and we found this by the Aspen Institute, who did a study about it, and you know, the investment for every dollar invested in social and emotional learning, $11 is returned in long-term benefits in the form of many ways, not only student potential gain, but the gain for all. So, this is important not only to us, but to our community and to the world at large. So, we appreciate your helping us to invest in this and to invest in our community through our students. So I know you recognize these circles. They're everywhere. The portrait of a graduate and the Castle competencies, you'll find these in all of our classrooms and many of our workspaces. It's getting very difficult to do a presentation on one of these items without the other. The Castle competencies are, teaching those will help us to get to the competencies outlined in Portrait of a Graduate, and I know a couple of months ago, we did an equity update, which also runs through both of these circles, as well as everything we do. And when we talk about social, emotional, social and emotional learning, it is all learning. It should be social, emotional learning, and all learning should have a piece of that within it. So, we wanted to put these together because they do fit and they do integrate, and we know that just talking about one of them isolates it from the other, but it moves together. Both of these move together, and these competencies are important for all of our students. Just a reminder that when we started this in the winter of 2018, we started because Dr. Sullivan signed a partnership agreement with the Collaborative for Academic and Social and Emotional Learning with the Regional Office of Education, and this has been instrumental in our progress. Castle provides us not only with research and evidence-based programs and guidance, but a coach as well, and our coach, Ruth Cross, has been instrumental in helping us move forward. She's very knowledgeable and is not afraid to tell you what you need to do next. So she's been very helpful in guiding us and helping us move forward. So this partnership is, has been very important for us, and it really made a statement when we started to tell staff that Dr. Sullivan had signed that partnership agreement. To them, it meant, oh, this is real, and we do care about it. So this has been a great part for us. The first thing that we did as we brought our group together was to create a vision statement. It was very important for our group that working together was at the forefront of this because it is not just one person, it's not one teacher, it's everyone working together for the social, emotional learning of our students, and then to include the community in that as well. And wanting to build trusting and safe relationships and a culture, culture of acceptance and resiliency was also very important to our team. So this was created to begin our work, and we feel like the staff has truly embraced this and has been engaged and interested in moving forward in this area. So who's doing the work? These three, as well as our leadership team. Our leadership team is made up of staff from all three levels, including our preschool, from a variety of roles. There's almost 50 people that meet to work in this area. It began, as I said, in the winter of 2018 by working on that vision statement. Our goal for last year was that by June of 2019, that the staff would know and be able to model the social, emotional learning competencies, so that it was very important, and the research showed from Castle, that in order for you to move forward with students, the staff had to be knowledgeable and be aware and be able to model these competencies. So we spent a full year on that. Our three leaders will talk a little bit about what that looked like at each level, so you have an idea of the activities that were done, but we feel like they have a good grasp of it, and our teachers were very engaged in this work. And then the And then the second part of it is the Theory of Action rubric, which was created by Castle to help us understand what implementation really looks like. It starts with the simplest form of it and moves to when you know you have full implementation. So, each year, we start by looking at the rubric. Where are we? At each of the levels and as a district. And then we talk about where we want to go. We make our plans, and then at the end of the year, we look again to see if we've made some movement in those areas. So, that's been our guiding document. So, where are we? As a district, we have the shared vision. We've been able to communicate it as a priority. As I said, when Dr. Sullivan signed that partnership agreement, it was very important to staff. It went out in the newsletter, as well as been a highlight of both Institute Day and I think your building tours as well, where she shared the information with staff. We want to, we've been promoting it around all academics and equity, and then we've provided some financial resources in order to support it. Through our curriculum and instruction budget, we've been able to supply staff with what they need in order to implement it. Our next steps, we'll talk a little bit about later, but it's really about continuous improvement and looking at that implementation as a district. So, with that being said, we're going to move into preschool, elementary, progress and next steps with Mr. Schnabel.
Thanks, Kathy. Thank you for this opportunity and for your support of SEL. The way we see it is if we break it down and we think about it, two categories, life and school. And it's our responsibility to prepare our young people for life beyond school. We think about life and school. Both are relationship-based, and so is teaching and learning and student growth. It really is the premise that with happy teachers and happy students, we're going to be pleased with our results. We're going to be happy with our results. We're going to feel good about ourselves. We're going to feel good about each other. The other thing that SEL does is it allows for learning itself to be both an academic and social process. So, much like we teach academic subjects, we also can teach behaviors and emotions. The wagon wheel is what we call, this thing here, I'm sure you've seen it and how it connects with the Portrait of a Graduate. The five, the five competencies, we begin with, we start with ourself, awareness and management, and then we branch out into social situations, relationship skills, and responsible decisions. At our level, we're working on a balanced combination or a marriage of our PBIS foundational base, along with blending social emotional learning and using both of them to create positive school cultures. Cultures of kindness and caring about the holistic child and the holistic staff member as well. At the elementary level, we organized our work into three main phases, and along with those three phases, resources for each of the three phases. So, last year, we concentrated our efforts on adult competencies, specifically the five traits, and self-care. This year, which is the current year, obviously a continuation of adult competencies and self-care. And then we added beginning stages of a Tier One SEL curriculum. And then next year, which is the third year and the third and final phase, full implementation of SEL curriculum at the Tier One level by June of 2021. But I can tell you that we've had an optimistic attitude and overwhelming response to why wait? And most of all of our schools have jumped into that, to that curriculum this school year. Actions or examples, Second Step, which is the curriculum at 20 of our elementary schools is being taught on a weekly basis. The nice thing, too, about Second Step is it has parent links for us to use in our parent communications. At our place, we also did a SEL-based presentation at a PTA meeting, and we try to weave it in throughout the day, whether it be ELA and/or social studies. But in addition to the weave, we, we built 15 minutes of SEL on a daily basis into our master for activities such as class meetings. Mainly, we are using SEL to teach kids to get to know themselves, get along, work together, and make our schools and world a better place. And really, what we're trying to do is emphasize and encourage how we treat each other, is how we make each other feel. We need to be there for each other, look out for each other, pick each other up, take care of each other. It's consistent with and speaks to positive school cultures. It is a work in progress, but it is becoming a strong foundation of our school identities.
Leslie? Hi, thank you for having me. This is really exciting for us to be able to talk about this, and we're all very passionate about it. We are also doing, at the middle school level, Second Step. We have all committed to going through those lessons on a weekly basis. And with those lessons, parents get linked home, so that through our newsletters, they can, they can talk to their kids about what it is that they're learning through Second Step at school. So, we have, we are also modeling those competencies. We've been doing that for the last couple of years, and we're identifying that with our students when we're modeling these competencies, because it starts with the adults first. If they don't have self-awareness, if they don't have responsible decision-making, then the kids are not going to follow suit with that. So, on top of our social emotional learning curriculum, which is Second Step, some of the supports that we're doing, all in, we're all kind of, middle schools doing some different things, but all along the same line. So, after talking to some principals, we're all doing what we call the Student Services Roadshows. And that's when our Student Services teams go into our classrooms at the beginning of the year, and they talk about, you know, where to go for help. They talk about, some of our schools do the non-negotiables presentations, which means that's kind of when kidding crosses the line. A lot of times when students make poor choices, they say, well, I was just joking. And we talk specifically about how joking crosses the line in those Student Services Roadshows. We are doing kindness challenges, positivity challenges. We're doing parent universities with some SEL focuses, with our Student Services teams presenting to parents. Counselor table talk is another thing that's going on, or things that can happen in the morning or after school, where we pick a hot topic and bring parents in to talk about those topics and to talk about how they can talk to their students about those. We are, a lot of us are jumping in on the Be Well campaign to really encourage self-care for our teachers. We're doing student and staff recognition, encouraging that self-care for teachers, teacher wellness breaks. We're doing mindfulness activities with our students, you know, starting the day by just sitting there and reflecting, doing some gratitude journals. Some of our teachers are doing yoga in their class, just things that are going to help them feel grounded to start their day. And spirit days. We also do a lot of activities advisory. And then we also, I know that we're all integrating these things into our SIP plans. So, I think I can speak for all principals, when we are sending that message to our teachers and our students, that it's not just about the academics, it's about their social emotional well-being. The academics will not be there, the test scores will not be there if our kids are not okay.
Thank you. And high school?
All right. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I'm going to be very similar to my colleagues here. We're very excited at the high school level. It is a challenge, given the demands of credits and graduation, but we recognize that if students do not have those social emotional skills, then they're less likely to be successful. They're less likely to graduate and less likely to be employed in the workplace. And so, we've really making, made it a priority to explicitly teach that. We started very similar to elementary and middle school, looking at the why behind it and also getting that teacher buy-in and making sure that teachers were informed of what those five competencies are. And we had some staff surveys to make sure that they understood exactly what they were. And then we made sure to define that for staff. We encouraged them to model those competencies when they were with students. We also gave staff explicit permission to focus on building and establishing those relationships early on in the school year and throughout the year. We want students to be happy and productive and to have resiliency and to be able to self-advocate. But we recognize that our students come from all different walks of life, and we need to explicitly teach that if we want to make sure that students have that and that there's that level playing field. Some of the things that we've done at the high school level, you know, we have a, each building has a SEL committee, and I know that they're well-attended from all three high schools. We've actually agreed to carry on at the high school level next year with full implementation. We've adopted the School Connect research-based curriculum, and we're really excited about that. We actually met this afternoon, and I'm very excited to say that we agreed upon the exact modules and competent lessons that we will teach across all three high schools. And I think to have consensus across all three is to be celebrated, but that's just how important we recognize that this work is. And so, we had a great meeting today, and we're looking forward to rolling that out. Some of the activities, we have meditation Mondays. We also have yoga. We also use the Calm app in classes. We do that for students, and we've done that for staff on the School Improvement Days. We're also focusing on, we had a gratitude wall at Thanksgiving to make sure and just talk about with our students and staff what they're grateful for. We recognize that the holidays are not always necessarily, they don't always bring the same joy for all families, and so we wanted students and staff to think about what they're thankful for. We're also focusing on the empathy part, the empathy piece, to recognize and to walk. My English people will appreciate this, from To Kill a Mockingbird, to walk in the shoes of another person and to be able to empathize is really important. So, we're just really excited. It is a challenge to balance the two, but what we've, with the content in the curriculum, but this is curriculum that's essential for high school and beyond. And our staff, they recognize that. So, I just have to commend our teachers. They've embraced this, and we're really working on the professional development and making sure that they have what they need. And I want to thank the district and the leadership for supporting us in this work.
So, there are a number of things, and this is certainly not an exhaustive list. And I do want to add that some of these things, many of these things, the schools started before we started an SEL leadership team. The purpose of the SEL team was to really bring things together and have a systemic approach, so that we had common language throughout pre-K all the way through, and that our, we were assured that our students were getting each piece that they needed. So, as they talk about all the different activities, those don't directly come from the SEL team saying, this is what you need to do. They're responding to the needs of the students within their building, and they're being creative, they're listening. Some schools even have SEL student committees and things like that. So, I do want to congratulate all of the buildings for embracing this and doing what they feel works for their students. I know that you, some of you had asked about mental health and SEL. Those are, there's a, there's a blurry line there, and so some of the things that you heard really address mental health, but also address the social emotional learning competencies. So, when you look at these areas, mental health is certainly an area for us that we are concerned about, that we are addressing and working through. The purpose of this group is to really look at a systemic approach to teaching the Tier One competencies, so that everybody starts or has the same information, and then working from that based on what's needed from there. So, there may be some other mental health things. So, I know that they talked about some mindfulness and some things like that. That comes from recognizing within your school or within your classroom that there are some extra things that are needed besides one lesson on self-awareness or something like that. So, I do want to commend the schools for responding in, to the needs of their own students. Our future considerations are really looking at continuing to develop these implementation strategies. So, you heard many of them today. When this group gets together, it's, it's, it's a great, it's a great committee. There's all kinds of talking and discussion and sharing of ideas and what should we do next, and bringing up ideas. But those are going to be conversations that are going to continue to happen. This group is going to continue to meet, to talk about the implementation. As I talked about before, professional learning is also going to be continuous. The needs of our students continue to change, so how we approach them and how we provide our teachers with the tools in order to be able to support them is going to continue to develop. And then, you know, we talked about social emotional learning is in everywhere and is in all learning, and it's already integrated in some of our, for instance, our ELA curriculum. There are great opportunities for that, but we want to continue to do that, so that it's social emotional learning through everything. And then, something that we've talked about before is how do we measure progress? Currently, we're measuring progress through implementation and looking at that Theory of Action rubric from Castle that says, when you get to this side, you're fully implemented and you're in a, in a very good spot. At some point, we will need to look at maybe a screener or a way to look at maybe how students, groups of students are working through it. At this point, until we get that Tier One and everybody gets the same information, it's not advisable in order to do that. Evidence and research shows us that it's, that it's not time yet, but that's something that we'll continue to look at. I get, and probably Dr. Sullivan does, too, emails every day from companies who are developing all kinds of tools for that. We will really lean on Castle to help us weed through all of those things to find what's best for our students and what will give us the best information, and to work with our parents on that, because there is a huge parent piece to being able to do that. So, with that being said, I'm just so proud of this SEL leadership team. They've done great work. These three have been instrumental in moving us forward. And then I'd also like to thank the board for the opportunity to share the important work of this group tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? I'm going to begin probably with our social worker, Ms. Peel.
It'll be an easy one, I think. I guess as we're presenting, you know, I come from an elementary perspective, so, you know, you've got 15 minutes a day that you have to teach this direct curriculum, which is an awesome, you know, way to start with our kids. But at the middle and the high school, you're, you're kind of into integration immediately because we're not going to put a block of SEL all of a sudden in all the kids' schedules. So, I, and as I was listening and reading what you've done, you've said, you know, you started with the adults, and I think that, you know, I applaud that. I think that was a very crucial step. But it's a big, huge step that can't be done in a month or a year, or even two years, you know? That takes a real long process to have buy-in. And I don't know, I don't know what my question is, other than, geez, that's a big old thing, and I never thought about it when we've talked about it before. And I, I think people need to be aware that that's such a huge factor, because not everybody is SEL competent, even social workers are not. So, so I guess if you want to speak a little bit of how you've gotten the buy-in for that part of it?
Do you want me to, I'll address high school first. So, we were very well aware of some of the things that you mentioned. We thought about that as, first as a district committee, but then as a building committee. So, in the high schools, we have representation from across the building, and we have kept it very open. So, some committees will be, like, you volunteer, and then that committee, that's the only group of people, but we've allowed people to be part of it. So, we have representation at Wabonzi from all departments. And we've really worked with our teachers to make sure and to ask them those questions, the teachers who are in the classrooms. Unlike myself, I'm, I'm not a teacher, I'm an administrator. We also made it part of every SIP day, so School Improvement. We've also created Lunch and Learns that were well-attended. And even before we rolled out the Castle competencies, it was a SIP day in August. We had an SEL session. It was conduct facilitated by myself and an English teacher at Niqua Valley. It was, we were quite surprised, before we even started, how well-attended that session was. We had to open up kind of overflow, because we didn't anticipate such the high interest and the high need. So, we've really tried to think about that, and how can we make it doable for teachers and recognize that not every-
and recognize that not everyone is at the same level. So hopefully that provides some clarification for you.
I can speak a little, sorry, I can speak a little about middle school. I think it's just, you're right, integration has to happen. And I think our curriculum lends itself beautifully to that. There's a lot of things already in our curriculum that is very social emotional heavy. And our teachers are hitting on that. Before we decided that we were all going to commit to Second Step, as a, as a middle school committee, we were thinking, let's get together and find the places in our curriculum in every discipline where we can really focus on that social emotional learning. And we realized that was a really big job and we were not there yet. But that's where we would like to get to. Every single day, we are, we're kind of shoving that down people's throats. It's social emotional learning and we're doing things for our teachers and doing things for our kids and just keeping it at the forefront of their minds. And knowing that, you're absolutely right, not everyone's in the same place and not everyone has these competencies. And I think it starts with the building leader to be able to give them permission to care for themselves and to focus on these competencies and to get there when they're ready to get there.
And do you want to talk a little bit about where you're, how you're teaching it? You did block out some time at the middle school.
Yeah, for Second Step, we do that. It's, it's weekly. So we have advisory at, at middle school and so that's when that's happening. So it's once a week during advisory for Second Step. But we have advisory lessons that we're doing on top of that. And we're having, we, at the middle school, we can, we have the flexibility to flex our schedule and do some creative things through social studies and things like that. So the teams are, they're being creative with how they're delivering that information.
Okay, thank you.
Susan? Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin.
That's okay. Leslie stole my answer anyway. You know, it, it goes without saying that we're all about kids first and we're a student-centered district. But in this case, we made a strong statement by starting with our staff. And whether it be elementary, middle or high school, teaching is a tough task. And we sent the message and we gave them permission. You need to take care of yourself in order for you to be at your best for kids.
Thank you. I, when I saw that this presentation was coming, I was just so excited because we are such, and we have every right to be, we're such an academic-driven district, which is terribly important, we all know that. But just everything that we see unfortunately and experiencing across the country, this is vital. And so I really thank you so much for helping teachers know and, and staff as well. And Karen, the things that you said, you, you started the year with this for staff and that was really important. You talked about leadership, having it come from the leadership is to let them know how important it is to take care of yourself, that it's vital. And we, you know, as, as mothers, we talk about being sure that we take care of ourselves so we can take care of our families. So this is really, really critical. I was so happy to see that you talked about parent universities. Can you share just a little bit? Because our parents, helping them to understand why this is so important to be included as part of the curriculum, I think may be a little beneficial so that they, they know. Because it's, it's one of those intangible things. If you can talk a little bit about that.
Yeah. Parent university isn't, is not something that every school is doing. And we're doing it at Gregory. I know there's some other middle schools that are doing it, but it's fantastic. It is literally a, a session for parents. You know, when they say, nobody wrote the book on parenting, well, these are topics that would be interesting to parents. It talks about like some, like social emotional struggles that kids are going through, signs of suicide. It talks about really heavy topics. And we have people, we, we call in people to present. So we'll call in community members and outside people to come in and present at these. We are doing them twice a year at, at Gregory. We had one in the fall and we'll be doing another one, I believe, in March. And we, we really, the, we're kind of asking parents, like what are we seeing in our student services office? What are we seeing, what are our kids dealing with? And then we will focus our presentations on those things. And like I said, sometimes it's our, our staff members that are leading these sessions. Sometimes it's outside presenters coming in. And parents get the option to choose different sessions that they're interested in.
I think one of the main reasons why Second Step won out is because it has the, the parent league that goes along with the weekly lessons. And then they can, at home, reinforce the skills.
I, I love the, it's just having that entire buy-in because these are such difficult conversations and things where you want to try and stay away from. If we have the conversation, does it, you know, enhance the opportunity? But, but it's just, it's so critical, so critical.
No, I'm sorry. And I guess I am actually a parent in the district and I have two children in an elementary school. And I can speak to, I don't know that you can measure it, measure it. But anecdotally, when I receive the Second Step handout that comes home, and it really instructs us as a family to sit down and have a conversation about specific strategies when my children can name their feelings and then calm down and they have this common language. Like I, I really do see a difference in just having been, you know, in the elementary stages, if you will, of implementation. As far as like parent education, that's something we're working on at the high school level. We're having that conversation, like how do we communicate to parents the work that we're doing at the high school level in a way that's so successful? Because I do see the benefits from elementary, given that my children are in the district. So I, I thank you, your group, for that.
And you could see that it's part of the next steps on each area is the community and parent partnership. Because we know everyone, we want everyone to have the same language because that's how kids are going to benefit the most.
Thank you. Mr. Carubus?
Yeah, great presentation. I love what I'm hearing. Focusing back on the, on the district board side, it being goal number one, the student grow socially emotionally. With the focus on what exactly do we do, do we need to do to measure this? I think that's the biggest challenge from the board work side. And I, and I'm okay with not having a measure that says, oh, you're mindful. There's things that are never gonna be, you know, some things are a journey and it ebbs and flows, multivariable, path-dependent. You can really drill down. But I think our approach is the right one. What are you doing? How much time? How many teachers, how many parents have we touched in contact? Is there a different way to get to there? So I think developing measurements along those lines just shows that we're trying and we're doing things. I'm not sure it's something where you can ever truly measure the efficacy. Is it, is it working? Because, you know, that, somebody might be able to calm down one day, but not the next. And, and so one teacher might, you know, so I think, I like where we're approaching this. I like the, what we've done so far and I look forward to circling back from a board side and working on the measurables. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Donahue?
So I'm thrilled to see the energy and work that's going on here. And 40-plus people on the committee is really outstanding. I, you know, people talked about the goal and the fact that it's number one. But it may be a subtle thing, but it was important to us as a board. If you look at how that goal is written, it's to help all students grow socially, emotionally and academically. We actually consciously put socially and emotionally in front of academics. And that's because we saw how needed and important it is in today's world. So thank you very much for all your work and keep going.
Mr. Eisen?
So, statement. So let me take you back like 19 years. What I loved about when I put my first daughter through preschool is that at preschool, in Prairie preschool, Karen Sullivan was the principal at the time, that we, we had.
How old are you, Dr. Sullivan?
19 years ago?
PBIS was, PBIS was fully implemented. I mean, the kids would walk down the preschool hallway and they'd be showing pictures of, you know, things to do or ways to act. And we carried that through into the elementary. And it was, it was entrenched in everything we did in preschool and elementary and even moving up to middle school. It, it kind of tapered off. But it was entrenched in everything we did from the way kids acted into everyday curriculum in the classroom and so on and so forth. You know, I'm looking forward to the presentation on the 27th that we're going to have. Because what I want to hear more about is, and you each touched on it, some of the things, but they were kind of 30,000-foot view things to me. Because I want to hear how we're looking at the different areas of self-awareness and how we're teaching the kids about self-confidence and emotions and, and the self-management and stress and social awareness and the empathy. I don't know if you saw it, Denmark just put empathy, they embedded it into their curriculum. So, you know, I want to hear more about those areas and how, not only are we doing the professional development, but in those different areas that even Castle talks about. So how is it being put in the classroom? How is it being put in the school? And then the other part in the homes and the community. Because I think when we embed it in everything we do in the classroom and the school, it funnels over into the community and it has a positive impact. And then we can look at now from a district level and how we can maybe try to find out some areas to measure. But it's all, but, but it's always going to be different or difficult. But what I, I understand each of our buildings are vastly different in, in the makeup and how they look and the students we're serving. But I think we need to have some core competencies that we are putting in place across every school at every level. Because I don't want to start operating in silos. And again, I understand the different needs of our different buildings, but I think we need to have some, some core things put in place. Kind of like that PBIS that I go back to that happened 19, 19 years ago. It just kept following the kids and it was almost like a reaction. It's just how they approached everything. So, you know, I'm hoping we get that out of the castle.
Well, I think you'll find that through Second Step. You know, starting at preschool with PaaS, which is uses some of the similar language. And then Second Step going K through eight. And then School Connects, which they've just embraced at the high school level, uses the same language. So that's the, that's the importance of why we wanted to create a systemic approach. It's just for those reasons. It's because it becomes just a way of life and the language that we use instead of something different everywhere.
Yep, thanks.
Ms. Grover?
Thank you for the presentation. Mental aware, mental health and SEL is really important to the kids, I think, because we do have a high functioning district and the academics is high and it adds stress to the kids. So having something that helps them is wonderful. I like the systematic approach you have with the tier one and School Connects. In the elementary level, how do you, I know in the middle school you have advisory. How, how do you do it in the elementary school level with School Connects?
Well, at our place, which is McCarty, we, we built in 15 minutes daily for SEL only. And that can be, like Mark was talking about PBIS, it could be the PBIS cool tools that we do on a monthly basis. Could be the weekly Second Step lesson. Or it could just be relationship building in class meetings and working out problems.
So does each school decide if they're going to do it daily or weekly? How does that work?
There are a set number of lessons. So each, we, the committee has asked each school to ensure that every student has every lesson. And then they, whether it's daily and working on it or whether it's through advisory, those kinds of things, how it's delivered, we leave up to each school based on the student needs of how much more they want to do or how much they want to add in. You know, many schools have been doing classroom meetings and things like that for a long time. So some of them have just incorporated the Second Step resource into those meetings. Some of them have done it, they've decided, everyone has decided that it's through a classroom teacher. Previously, sometimes you might've had a, a mental health professional, like a social worker or a psychologist do it. But they've found it to be very important that it's the, a classroom teacher so that that language goes throughout the day. But really the parameters were, we want every student to have every lesson every year. And so that's the, that's the core.
And I know certain schools are, they do things based on their schools. It's very individually based. You have the systematic, but like at Niqua, we had Health Moves Minds. You were talking about how you have mindfulness at your school. Is there a way schools can communicate with each other what they have or what they offer? Do we, like, do they do that?
Sure. I think part of it is having representation on this committee where they talk a great deal about what's going on and have even a site where they put ideas and things like that. That we've talked as a leadership team about making time in their professional meetings with principals to just talk about SEL and how's it going, what are you doing, those kinds of things. It's just carving out some time to just have those conversations about it. So I think it, it goes at two different levels. It comes from the SEL leadership team who's talking about it and making things happen. And then it comes at the administrative level to look at schools. Our schools are pretty aware of what other schools are doing, especially with three high schools you saw tonight. They all came. But at, at the middle school and at the elementary, it's a little more difficult. But they do share ideas and they work together on many things. So there are opportunities to share those ideas. There's opportunities to partner in some of those activities as well.
My, my last comment question is, I like the parent component. Because sometimes students know what they're going through, but the parents don't understand. And so I want to say thank you for, you know, reaching out to the parents and thinking of ideas. The other thing, which was helpful to me as a parent, was when my kid transitioned from eighth grade to ninth grade. And I remember that first meeting with Dr. McBride, he talked about mental health at the orientation. And so, you know, immediately it was, all the parents were there. So I, that's one way to get the parents is when you have that captive audience. But thank you.
Others? Of course, I have a few comments. You're laughing. No, she's not. She's laughing at me. Thank you so much. First of all, my first comment is beginning with adult competencies. I have a lot of urgency to like fix everything right away. And when you do that, you have, you create a mess. And I think the systemic approach to this, beginning with our teachers and, and training them and having them embrace it in a systemic manner, I think is really important if we're going to have everyone buy into this. So I think that was really important. People didn't get to see the rubric. The board got to see the rubric. It was an honest evaluation of where you're at. We're at beginning stages with a lot of our information and, and rollout of the social emotional learning program. But it did provide at least an opportunity for the board to see where, where we're at. As Mr. Carubus said, there's more to be evaluated and more to be looked at. But I appreciated the rubric. Finally, as I think all the board has said, the goal was intentional. Extremely intentional. And sometimes, this is my own personal comment. I think we get stuck with like terminology, like SEL and PBIS and all this stuff. And we kind of get lost in it. But I liked what I heard at the beginning. And that was a really concern not only about the student, but about their life after, and that might be after school or it might be when they're 23. I also liked what I heard in terms of what we're doing with our teaching staff, which is we're more concerned about them beyond just being a teacher in our district. And if I was going to make a recommendation to you, I would make it like really simple. And that is, in this district, let's start with our students. And that is, in this district, let's start with our students. You're more than a test score. You're more than a grade. You're more than the college you get yourself into. That we, we need to have, what I heard, was a culture of well-being, a culture of caring, and a culture of kindness, which is mu, as important, as important. This is a fundamental paradigm shift. With the mental health issues of our students, I want this district to be at the forefront of a paradigm shift, which is you're more important than that grade, that test, and that college you're getting yourself into. If you're happy, if you have friends, if you can make it financially, well-being is well, it's beyond the grade. And the same thing goes for administrators as a board. I challenge our board to look at our administration more than their role, and our teachers also. I'm glad we're making that stop because that's what this presentation and future presentations are all about. And I think we need to reinforce that a lot with our kids, and perhaps as a board and as central office administrators, we reinforce that with our teachers and staff. And if we have that kind of environment, it just leads towards higher achievement. Because if you feel good, you feel safe, you're going to achieve. Sorry, I'm like passionate about this stuff. I had to, I, I had to get that off. You can respond or not.
I just want to say thank you because it's clear that everyone is wrapped around this topic and has given us the permission as well as the drive to keep moving forward. So, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be less verbose. We have a legislative update. Our legislators will be meeting soon. Two things that we're looking at, of course, is pension reform to see whether or not that's going to occur. The Legislative Education Network of DuPage is again meeting on January twenty-fourth. They're having a speaker, Dick Ingram. He's the Executive Director of TRS. And he'll be, he'll be talking to all the districts about potential pension reform. As a board, we need to look at that. The other thing that I think the board should be aware of and the community is the ever-popular Property Tax Relief Task Force, all eighty-eight of them, released a draft report. Depending on who you read from, anywhere from Robin Schwartz, who talks about levies and TIFs and tax rates, or the Chicago Tribune, who talks about sales tax and what that might mean. This is clearly being interpreted in a thousand eighty-eight different ways. As a school board, we have to look, we understand, for better or worse, that property tax is what funds us mostly, and we have to see if there is an alternative to property tax that we continue to be funded in a way in which we can educate our kids, so...
The legislators go back January twenty-eighth, so look for a flurry of bills.
So, that's my legislative report. Not yet. I have a board report. I do, again, want to thank the community, everyone who participated in the superintendent search. I hope I made it clear that your input to us drove our decision-making. So, thank you for being partners in the educational process because we were able to hire the best candidate, we think, in the United States.
No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure, Dr. in, in order to lead, lead our district. So, a, a special thank you to the community. I want to thank the board, and I'm going to do it on behalf of the community. There was an inordinate amount of time spent.
Yes, an inordinate amount of time.
Working, working with each other. It was for the benefit of the district, but I'd like to remind people that unlike Dr. Tally's district, which we found out paid their board members, we are, we are volunteer board members. So, so I appreciate your time and energy. It clearly ended in a good result. And then, last but not least, I want to thank the board again, just for the community's sake. I, we did talk about our presentation that we made for the Illinois Association of School Boards. Is your board working as a team? And Mr. Carubus found it. I didn't know that they were doing this, but in the Illinois Association of School Boards Journal, there was a synopsis of two presentations, and one of them is District 204, is your board working as a team? So, again, thanks for all your efforts. Finally, last but not least, there is a reception for Dr. Tally tomorrow from four-thirty to five-thirty. The entire community is invited to join us to welcome Dr. Tally to the school district. Just a reminder, Dr. Sullivan, you're with us until like June thirtieth. No slacking. And with that, do I have...
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?